It's important.
So you just fill up. Keep, what do you do? Just fill up your glass and that's, I've seen.
Taproom. It's just a, it's like a bar restaurant. They call it a taproom, but it's. Thanks, John. I don't know. I like to find places that are office away from offices. So I'll work other places.
We're recording.
Start the next.
That's yours. We've missed a couple of people. Ross came in the room.
My clock says five fifty-nine.
Seen council member Green Steiner.
They're gone.
We're gonna have to be enough. Get started. All right. Well, it's Thursday, September twenty-second, and I'm gonna call this Lacey, City Council Work Session to Order. We have a published agenda. Are there, are any changes? And again, motion approved.
Please approve your job as.
Second.
In one second, is there any discussion? See none, all the pair of the motions signified by saying aye.
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 Anyone opposed? Now, motion carries. We have an agenda. And first up on our agenda is the Lacey Neighborhood Association Grant Program.
Great. Well, thank you, Mayor, Deputy Mayor, council members, for your time this evening. I just wanted to take a chance to provide a brief overview of our Neighborhood Association Grant Program, as well as provide some updates as we're heading into two thousand and twenty-three with some changes that are gonna be made. I'm going to just share my screen. There we go. So just a quick overview of this program. So in two thousand and seventeen, the council approved twenty-five thousand dollars for this program for our community. And in the first two years, we saw just a great success. There was a lot of interest in the program. The applications in two thousand and eighteen practically doubled, and so we got to a point where we didn't have enough money to fulfill those requests. And so in in reaction to the success that this program has seen, the council approved sixty thousand dollars for this program in, that was in two thousand and nineteen. And so, and that is where the budget remains today is sixty thousand dollars. Currently, in order to be eligible to apply for a grant, the neighborhood must be an active HOA and officially recognized by the city of Lacey. Additionally, the project must have a lasting effect or direct benefit to our community and be nonprofit in nature. So there's a current list of grant categories that people can submit applications for: safe neighborhoods, environmental sustainability, neighborhood beautification, board education, organizational development, and compassion. I know that's kind of small, but you do have it in the staff report. This is just a list of the two thousand and twenty approved grants, projects that are currently, they've either been completed, or we have about six or seven projects that still need to be completed, so they have till the end of the calendar year to finish those. But so far, the projects have been great this year, and everybody has just been fantastic about turning in all of their paperwork and everything that we need on the city's end. So this is a matching grant program, so. Did we miss a, oh, there we go. I missed a slide there, but so these are some of the grant guidelines that are currently in place. So there's a maximum grant amount of twenty-five hundred dollars per project. Not all of them meet that, so if, if their project only costs a thousand dollars, then they would get a grant for five hundred dollars and have to meet that with a match, and the match can come in the form of money or in-kind donations or volunteer hours. Obviously, the projects must meet city codes, ordinances, and non-discrimination policies. And all of these projects get reviewed by myself, as well as a team of some city staff from our Public Works Department and our Community Development Department, just to make sure that, you know, we address any red flags that might be present in any of these applications. And so then, yes, there's the list of projects that we had this year. We had a total of twenty-seven different HOAs who submitted applications. And the total requested grant funds were sixty-one thousand, six hundred dollars. And with some of the remaining grant funds from last year's cycle that did not get used, we were able to fully fund all of those requests that came in this year, which is great. And I also see that the community's estimate of their matching was about eighty-nine thousand, five hundred and sixty-three dollars. So that results in a little bit over a hundred and fifty thousand dollars being put back into the community for beautification of the Lacey community. And so, stemming from some past discussions with around this HOA grant program, from committee presentations, council members expressed the interest of expanding this to include informal neighborhoods, so not having to have that requirement, being a recognized HOA within the city limits. Well, they still need to be within the city of Lacey limits, but we are going to be opening this up to informal neighborhoods. So I did a little research to find out what other cities are doing as far as, do they require it to be an HOA or informal neighborhoods? So you'll see those results in Table A in the staff report, and if you need, I've printed off the table if you need to see that. So some of the drafted changes to the program overview and guidelines are also in, it's an attachment to the staff report, and I have those here as well, but really just changing some of the language in there to include informal neighborhoods. We've included that they must have a project team of at least five individuals in that neighborhood who are dedicated to seeing this project to completion. They're, you know, five different, non-family related, who live in one neighborhood. So just to make sure that you've got buy-in from that community, since it's not an official HOA with the board or overseen by a management company. So some of this changes is just including some of that language, requiring that projects must have documented support of their neighborhood, and so we've created a project team log, which gives some contact information and signature on their part, saying, yes, I want to be a part of this, and I'm committed to seeing this through. And then we just added some language as far as what's not eligible, just to be very clear. Obviously, you know, we're not going to fund projects that take place on somebody's private property, trimming somebody's trees, things like that. So this has to be something that will be a betterment for their community, for their neighborhood. And also, we have addressed, we've expanded some of the grant categories and just trying to brainstorm some different ideas that could bring communities together. So maybe adding like a neighborhood art or monument structure, encouraging national night out events. So this grant money could go towards putting on an event for their neighborhood that would bring them together, bring city officials, the police there, things like that, just trying to bring some awareness to some of those different ideas for that. And we also added in the Community Emergency Response Team Organization. So we've had those, we've had that one other time, and it was a great success for their project. So we'd love to see those informal neighborhoods getting behind that as well. And we also just made a note in here for the volunteer hours, the value of that. We are just going by the independent sector's value of their volunteer time. So the city will just kind of mirror that every year. So as that changes, then we would change that, that value as well. So for two thousand and twenty-two, that value is twenty-nine ninety-five per hour. So we'll just stay in line with that.
What is a national night out event?
So the city actually participates in national night out already. A good example, well, gosh, how many did you guys do this year?
So National Night Out is a night out that puts, brings together usually neighborhoods and usually HOAs, because they're the ones that are organized to get together. Usually, it's a big picnic, and then they invite the police department there to have a conversation with the police and council members. And so I've been participating in National Night Out for, I'm sitting on, on the council. I know a lot of council members have, have them as well.
There was a great response this year. I know, like Horizon Point, they usually put on a big one in their community park there. But a lot of the smaller ones, they'll invite them, you know, to even somebody's backyard that volunteers to host it. But yeah, it's a, it's a great event. So trying to get some of those informal neighborhoods who just to get your, get to know your neighbor better, it helps with neighborhood safety and.
Do you guys put that on our, our schedules, or how does that?
Yeah, yeah, okay.
We'll make sure.
It is, it's kind of organized through the police departments.
Yeah, typically, an email blast will go out to council and see, can you participate?
What is that usually? I can't remember.
It's first week of August. Yeah, first Tuesday.
It's not August.
Okay.
It's a good event.
Yeah, it's great then.
So yeah, if we can let neighborhoods know that, you know, this grant is available to help put on an event like that, yeah.
It's a good accountability thing for the informal neighborhoods where.
Right. Yep. Yep. Yep.
So you mentioned that we're adding language about Community Emergency Response Team Organization, and that somebody, some group had already done that. That's real cool. And I think that we need more of that in Lacey, just in case, you know, Cascadia Rising is showing we have a lot of
Absolutely.
and our emergency preparedness of a large earthquake hits, and say, I five falls down.
Right.
And that you're supposed to be able to get by without a lot of help from, like, public station for a long time unless you're a school or a hospital.
Yeah.
So I'm interested, can we provide, like, guidance? Or is there a template that we can offer, or that we can work with emergency management to offer to neighborhoods that are interested in creating that structure?
I think that we could definitely work with the county, since they have that pretty planned out already. And I think it was Jubilee that went through and did this several years ago. Yeah, they have a great, yeah. And I actually invited two of the people that led that effort to attend one of our HOA academies, which is, it's an all-day classroom-style thing that I usually put on once a year on a Saturday. And so they actually led a session on that for HOA board members and management companies, and that was a well-attended and well-received. And we actually have an academy coming up in November, so that actually might be a great topic to bring back. Maybe we can work with, with the county to encourage that.
Because if you go through that Community Emergency Response Training, they encourage you to make those connections with your neighbors. But I'm thinking for the informal neighborhoods, they don't have, like, regular meetings.
Sure.
But having, having a path to build that structure just for emergency response would be really useful.
Yeah, absolutely. So are there any other questions?
No, I don't have a question, but I have a couple of comments. First of all, thank you. I'm, I'm one of those council members who spoke up about this issue in particular, because I live in an informal neighborhood. I live in an old historic place neighborhood. That's not an HOA. And this is actually an example of an issue that was brought up at the Real Council, National League of Cities. The Real Council, as you know, I've been very involved in the Race Act and Leadership Council. We all sat around in a brainstorming session and tried to think of, are there things that we're doing within our, our local governments that is actually perpetuating inequities unwillingly? Right? And so we all, we all sat around and stormed brain, you know, about different things. And this was actually one of the things that I came up with. Because if you think about a lot of our older communities, they are not in an HOA, and so they don't have the same access to this program that newer neighborhoods have. And so you're sort of by accident perpetuating an inequity that you, that you're actually growing, because the new HOAs neighborhoods continue to keep up, and the old neighborhoods don't have an opportunity. And so I'm really happy that we're here and we're looking at this. And you know, I, I think that we are taking a step forward to helping out some of our old neighborhoods and giving them an opportunity to even get together. You know, I was born and raised in Old Story Lacey, and I can count on, on a handful of times where the neighborhood has sort of gotten together, and it's usually over to complain about something the city is doing. Right? And so to give them the ability to get together and come together and get to know your neighbors and all that, I think it's, it's really cool. The, the one thing I will say is, I think we need to look at the sixty thousand dollar a year budget. You know, that's where it's been before we allowed HOAs, or when only with allowing HOAs, now that we're opening up to other neighborhoods. And that's, it'll be interesting to try and figure that, what we can consider a neighborhood. Some of them are named, others are sort of areas, and I think we'll, we'll sort of figure that out. And, you know, it's getting people to come together to talk and and sort of, you know, well, we kind of live over here. This is our, our neighborhood. And I, I think that's good to get people to interact and talk. So but I think we need, look, look at that number and maybe need to increase it a little bit if possible. Because, you know, if we keep at this number, and we've already reached, reached it without including the other neighborhoods, was, you know, what, what are we gonna do? And so I'm not sure where that number should be in the next budget, but I think it needs to be higher than sixty thousand, just to give everyone the opportunity. And then I guess what we can do is sort of see how the applications come in. Because the other big thing about this is how do we get this information out to the neighborhoods that are non-HOAs? Because that's one of the benefits of being an HOA. You have a structure in place to sort of this, you know, disseminate information. And these other neighborhoods, you sort of are up to other things, like, we have, I have a, an old historic placing Facebook page where I can, you know, when this comes out, I will post it to that, and then we'll have a conversation. But I don't know how the other neighborhoods interact, if it's on Nextdoor, or who knows? And so I think it's something we need to think about. I think it gives us an opportunity to reach out to those other neighborhoods. And I'm not sure if that's in a direct mail piece or, or what, but I think we need to think about that, because if we just pass it through the normal course of our doing business and, and not have a, a communication plan on how we get it out to, to these new qualifying neighborhoods, then we probably won't see a lot of action. Mr. Councilor Steban?
Thanks, Mayor. Yeah, so I just want to touch base on the HOA thing, because there's a lot of neighborhoods out there that could use this program, and I'm all in favor of it being, you know, a hundred thousand instead of sixty. You're, you're investing in your city or the, the neighborhoods are. And on a, you know, my day job, I, I incentivize that with my tenants for, you know, if they want to do something that is more of a luxury item, instead of a, a lease thing or necessity, we'll split the cost, because they're really investing in them, and I'm invest, they're investing in me, and I'm investing in them. So it's kind of the same thing, just on the public side.
I don't know what that number should be.
Well, let me out for suggestion. I think you bring up a good point about older neighborhoods. Typically, you'd have older plats. So theoretically, there is a structure that they're just inactive. A while back, we had a map, and we could kind of share or show where the gaps are, where we do not have active HOAs, or just areas that predominantly participate. You could prioritize the program to make sure that at least fifty percent of the funds are going to informal neighborhood groups to kind of, because some of these groups, I think, have come back. We've had, you're just three years now, four years?
Four or five.
So I mean, you have some neighborhoods that have come back, you know, every year. So.
If we're really gonna distribute the, the programs in a sense of investment, it would make sense to put a priority on those neighborhoods that have not been able to participate in the past. I, I think, I think that's, should be a part of the, the math equation. Like I said, I don't, I don't know what that number should be. I, I do think it needs to be raised from sixty thousand. I don't know what the right number is, but, and then I think there should be a priority if, wherever that number is, if, if it's a new, if you had, if you had something last year, you know, you're not in line for the next year, you know, sure, that way.
I think that's how TRPC does grants for transportation projects in the smaller jurisdictions in the county, is if you requested, like, and you got funded last year, you're not first in line this year. You're having, you're getting skipped over for a year. But one of my questions was gonna be, do we keep track of requests that we can't fund? So that we could measure the real demand?
Sure. So this, this year for two thousand and twenty-two, I received just enough applications to use up all the sixty thousand dollars. So this year, it worked out really well. In the past, so I think it was twenty eighteen, twenty, twenty eighteen, I had to, it was open to submitting multiple applications, like an HOA could submit multiple applications. So then we reduced it down to you're only allowed to do one. And then there has been years that the requested amount exceeds the sixty thousand dollars, and so then I kind of prorate all of them, so that all of them are receiving a percentage. Yeah, yeah, just so that they're all at least receiving something. And usually, it's, it might just be like a hundred and fifty or two hundred dollars less than what they were requesting. So it's not, it's not as substantial. Just stretch it a little bit, yeah. I will say, yeah, it'll be interesting to see what kind of response we get from the inactive neighborhood communities. I have good communication with our HOAs. I try to keep that information updated in my database, so that I'm reaching the right people. But I will say, even with adding like a blurb in our Lacey life that goes to all of our residents, I mean, plus some, but it's pretty specific, saying you have to be inside the city of Lacey. I've had a few people reach out from new HOAs who I didn't have their information. So that is reaching people, and, and folks are reading that, which is good.
I think it takes a little bit to say fifty-fifty, HOAs and others. I wouldn't want to sit in a position where we didn't get much participation from informal neighborhoods.
And there's funds remaining. Right.
So I think you're gonna.
That's why I think, like, this first year, we're gonna have to sort of, it's tough to set, you know, I think we should maybe set a cap, but sort of see what the activity is.
I mean, we could talk about internal, but I think you give maybe first or right refusal, if you will, for those informal neighborhoods. If they're not used up, then it can go to the folks that are organized. I mean, we get, we just need some, some history with that, see what the demand's gonna be.
Do you have an idea of what the, the number should be, the budget number? I know it. You know.
Well, I was gonna say, I think we could still commit to sixty. If we need to make an adjustment, we can wait to the demand. If we need to make a budget adjustment, we can do that.
We just have this as an action item on a council meeting after we get all the applications. And if we have more requests, then we have funding, we can make.
Make the decision then. I, that, I would be happy.
Can I make one more point?
Yeah.
I also think we need to focus on security side of the, of this too, because it can work hand in hand with our police department. You know, some people might want to put up some lights or, or better mailboxes, or even like a, a gate that's solar-powered or something like that, who knows? But just something to think about.
Yeah, we actually get a good amount of applications that come in, kind of under that safety category. So a lot of the secured mailboxes, some new brighter lighting, LED lighting around their properties, like at the common areas. So that's a common.
You know, the, yeah, safety on the mailboxes is a big, big, big deal.
We've had, there is a lot, as you can see in that list of projects that were approved, a lot of secure mailboxes.
And, and some of these smaller neighborhoods, you know, the five houses only have one way in and one way out. So if they were able to restrict that access some, that would take away of a lot of issues for a lot of little neighborhoods.
Well, let's, let's see what kind of things come in. And I, I, like I said, I appreciate, appreciate the expansion, and I agree. Let's, let's get the, let's put it out, and then let's see what comes back, and we'll
Sounds great.
Yeah, I think we have a grant category that does save neighborhoods. I think the gated community is a different discussion. You're blocking out public roadways. That's a different discussion entirely.
I think so too. Okay.
Great.
Thank you. So our next agenda item is the Community Cat Program.
Hello.
Hello.
Thank you. Seeing a smile right there, just with that. Good evening, Mayor, Deputy Mayor of City Council. Thank you for having me this evening. Tonight, we're going to be discussing Joint Animal Services Community Cat Program, as well as the requested ordinance update to support this lifesaving program. So on September sixth, the Lacey City Council received a letter from Joint Animal Services Commission requesting that our ordinances for the city of Lacey be updated. Letters went out to each of the jurisdictions, Thurston County, Tumwater, and Olympia as well. We did an in-depth review of our ordinances to determine what needed to be changed to support this program. And so before we talk about those changes, I do want to talk a little bit about what is a Community Cat Program, and what exactly is a Community Cat? And so Community Cat is a common term that we refer to for, you might hear it as a free-roaming cat, a stray cat, a feral cat. Maybe even a cat at large. There is a category for that. And they can be found in just about everywhere that people live. Cats have been a part of our society since the beginning. These outdoor free-roaming cats live in and are cared for by the community, hence a Community Cat. So you might see cats up and about. People do have cats that are indoor/outdoor cats that make the rounds in the community. You might have a friendly cat that's really nobody's cat, but everybody knows exactly who it is. Some of the community feeds this cat, keeps an eye out, takes care of them. So in the past, the main way that Community Cats were handled, or feral cats, when they were considered a nuisance problem, was what we call a catch-and-kill method, and it relies on an ineffective way. And it's a very expensive model, where animal control basically goes out, rounds up all the cats with traps. We try to adopt out which ones are friendly, and then everything else is killed or euthanized. Same thing. And while it got, took care of the initial problem, it doesn't take care of the problem as a whole, because with cats, when you have a colony in a community, they are there because there is a resource. There's food, whether that's a rodent problem, somebody's feeding them. And so as long as there are resources available in that community, you will always have cats coming back. So when you remove cats from that area, it just allows the vacuum effect to take place, and more cats move in. So it's really not solving the problem. And so that was the old way of handling this. Cats also reproduce faster than we can keep up with them. And it is why most shelters and a lot of municipalities across this, across the country have moved to this progressive way of animal sheltering. It's also very costly for us to maintain a catch-and-kill. So there's two other approaches to handling a Community Cat Program, and the best is when they're fully integrated. So initially, when Community Cats first came out, the way to handle it was to do what we call trap, neuter, vaccinate, and return. And this was the community going out, placing humane traps, capturing these cats, taking them to the vet, having them spare-neutered, vaccinated, and then returned back to the area. These cats that participated in this program were ear tipped, so you can see in my presentation, all the cats tonight have a piece from their left ear missing. That signifies that they have been trapped. It's a great visual, especially for cats that are feral, and you can't get close to, that you can see that trapping has already happened in that area, and you know they are vaccinated and spare-neutered. So, and part of the way you can do this, and this is really great, because the community participates in helping with this problem. So you get community members involved, you get other volunteers involved, and it really becomes a group effort with both your jurisdiction, your animal shelter, and the community working together to solve this problem. And so the other way to handle this is what we call a shelter-neuter-vaccinate-return, or return-to-field. And that's where the brick-and-mortar shelter is the one doing the trapping. Or we take cats that have been brought to us, could be stray, could be feral. Or we take cats that have been brought to us, um could be stray, could be feral, but they are brought to us into the shelter. And instead of euthanizing, because we cannot place them up for adoption. We would spay and neuter, vaccinate, and return them back to their community. This is all communicated with the community as we're doing this. This is not something under cloak and veil. These are conversations that we are having with people calling. You know, calling us saying that there is a nuisance problem, they have cats coming into their yard. It begins a conversation where there is a solution that everybody can agree on. And one of the things that everybody can agree on is that when people are asked. That if they, when they know that there's a problem and you say this, these are the solutions, and one of the solutions is. Is that we can trap, neuter, vaccinate, return this animal, it can live its full life, healthy, happy, keep other cats away, keep your rodent population down. Or the alternative is for us to kill this cat because we do not have placement for it. Three to one, people are going to say that they want this cat to have a positive outcome. They don't want the consequence for this cat to be euthanized as the end result of this problem. And so this ends up being a really amazing solution for all parties involved. Because what this also does is it doesn't stop us addressing nuisance complaints as it comes in. But it allows us to have a conversation with our community about what some of these benefits are and what we could be doing. Sometimes it's a conversation with one of my animal control officers. Going out to a property that is having an influx of cats maybe coming onto their property, destroying their garden. Um and it's allowing us to come see, have them show us where the cats are coming in. Look around the neighborhood, see if we can find a community caretaker. Um there, nine times out of ten, there is somebody feeding these cats somewhere nearby. And they have decided that this property is a safe place to be. Um whether the property owner wants them there or not, and so. It allows us to have a conversation and really be proactive with solutions that could help keep the cats out of the yard. While we provide the service, because most of the issues that arise from nuisance. Can be solved with a spay or neuter because of a lot of them are behavior-related that comes with cats. Not not being altered. And so it it's a great way to continue education um and work with the community. So the recommendations that we are asking for the city of Lacey. There is not necessarily a change, more of an updated language is how I would like to call it. So we would like the city of Lacey to add definitions. Into the chapter reserved for animals outline outlining what the definition of a community cat is. And what the definition of a community cat caretaker caregiver is. The difference being the community cat does not have an owner. It is a free-roaming cat that is owned by like hypothetically owned by the community. And a community caregiver does not own that cat. They are doing what's in the best interest of that cat and making sure that they are fed and taken care of. While they are living their life in the community, and so it's making sure that we are not punishing people for trying to do the right thing. By these cats, but also helping them with resources. And allowing these cats to be who they are and be members of the community while managed. Because we are managing them while spaying and neutering them and keeping the population minimal and. Stopping other cats from moving into that community. You now have like a. A colony size that's manageable, that you can keep track of partnering with the community. And then that kind of keeps everything down. Um and then the other thing that we're asking for a language change is to just update the licensing. To make it very clear that we require pet animals to be licensed. And so we would be asking to have any person who considers their dog or cat a pet animal. Required to license their pet in the city of Lacey, and that's the main difference. Cause that will also help us when we are doing trapping in the future. Those that are licensed, we already know identified are owned and they will not be trapped in part of the program. And so that helps with clear definition of what an owned cat is versus what an unowned cat would be.
So in this circumstance, th- does there have to be a community cat get caregiver in order for this to happen?
Not necessarily, no, um but I can usually guarantee you there's. There's a community cat caretaker somewhere, but most of the time we will not come forward for fear of retribution. Um and fear of punishment um for trying to do what's best and help the animal. Um sometimes it's not an individual, sometimes it's multiple. Sometimes you have cats who are actually being fed by multiple houses in the community and no one actually knows. That they're feeding the cats. Um it can also be uh local stores. Um one of the stories told from um. Exit out of this so everybody can see, one of the. One of my favorite stories told was a neighborhood that was back behind a Dollar General. And the Dollar General manager was actually caring for the cats cats in the community back behind the store, but what was happening. Um is one of the houses behind, the cats were residing in his tree. And they were actually destroying the tree because they were all wanting to be up in it, climbing on it, that's where they felt safe. And so after the animal control officers kind of explored the area, figured out where the cats were being fed, they realized that the cats had no. Elevation to go to feel safe. Cats either want to be high or they want to be low and hiding, and so once they actually brought in. In essence, cat trees, so to speak, like ways for the cats at the Dollar General to get up high and feel safe and get out of the way. The cats actually stopped coming into the gentleman's yard, but they were then also able to work with the dollar store manager. And spay and neuter all of those cats in that area, so then that colony was now managed healthy. And no other cats were going to be moving into the area. Questions about community cats?
This is a recommendation coming from.
Jazzcom.
Jazzcom, so.
So you mentioned cat colonies, so at some point if a colony is established, that means no other cats will go into that area, so they are territorial.
They are territorial. They also will only grow to the size of the resources. So once we have also identified if there is a caretaker, there's actually coaching we can do. Uh for example, they would only feed a certain amount once a day at a set time of day, and after thirty minutes they pull that. That way food's not out all day. Encouraging other cats to come in as well as predators, uh rodents, you name it. Um but once you have an established managed colony. Um and I can speak for personal experience, when I lived in Arizona, our neighborhood had a managed colony and I was one of the caretakers. We did not see any new cats. Uh for the five years that we lived there, they were all managed, happy, healthy. I would see those cats. Um at different neighbors being fed. They had their routine that they would go, but I can also tell you. We never once experienced some of the rodent problems that were very common in Phoenix, so. We have roof rats that are drawn in by citrus, and so because we had an established feral cat colony. Our little neighborhood did not actually have an infestation of roof rats because of that. So there are benefits to keeping colony cats um that have been sterilized around, especially. In businesses um or areas that would normally draw um a rodent population.
And this is off subject, but do we know what the number of coyotes what we have in our area is that I I have so. I have I have a camera in my um my, you know, my yard, I've I've seen more coyotes in this past year than I I can ever remember.
It's another thing that limits the population at a certain point.
Actually, I have two questions. The first one uh was you were saying that community caregivers uh could be resourced. And I didn't know what that meant.
We could provide resources for them, so um usually what happens, because there's fear of retribution and that they're going to get into trouble. They won't come out and tell us the number of cats that they're caring for or that they're even caring for them. So it takes some investigation on our part. Once we know and can identify, then the resources available can be. Providing spay-neuter vouchers if they're the ones comfortable wanting to do the trapping and taking them to a veterinary clinic. We can come out and help them do the trapping as well. We can provide um. Safe places for the cats to go where it's dry and warm. We can provide those elevated safe places to help keep them on property. We can also, for people who find that. You know, perhaps those cats are a nuisance and they don't want them in their yard, we can also provide resources to help them keep the cats out of their yard. There's a number of humane ways that you can prevent cats from coming into your yard and destroying your property. Um that don't have to resort to trapping and removing them from the neighborhood.
Okay, second question, uh trapping, you you catch a cat, it it belongs to somebody, it's not licensed, you don't know, but maybe they come and identify it. Um is there, do they get penalized for not getting their their animal licensed?
We do ask upon reclaim, it's one of the requirements if they came to reclaim their cat. Um there is a penalty that's set by the city of Lacey for an unlicensed animal, I believe it's a hundred and three dollars. Um but usually most people just want to license the cat for the much reduced fee, but in our process, how that would work, if we were going out trapping. Um we would make it very clear to the community what was happening, the date, we would go door-to-door flyer. Ask people to keep their cats in on that night that we were doing the trapping or that the volunteers are doing the trapping. Uh there would be two stopping points, one checking for a license, but two, we would also scan for a microchip. And scanning for a microchip would happen twice, one upon uh trapping of the cat. And then the second time would be once it was under anesthesia for the surgery. Uh prior to surgery, if we did not ident- if there's no means of identification and that cat was somebody's. They're going to be getting a free spay-neuter and vaccination out of the deal, and their cat will be returned the next day. It could be owned by somebody, it may not be. The only way we can identify that is by making it mandatory that people license their pets. And encourage people to microchip. That's going to be the two best ways that we can make sure that an animal is owned, dog or cat.
Slight language change you're talking about. Now it's pet animals. Would that broaden to include other pets like ferrets or?
No, so it's the initial says for pet animal, but then it defines it within the ordinance that it's a dog or a cat considered.
Is just to indicate that someone owns the cat.
Correct.
Versus not being an owner, just being a caretaker.
Correct, and versus us saying it's a requirement for all dogs and cats to be licensed. It's just a a clarification of language to identify that it's owned, owned dogs and cats that need to be licensed.
This is preparing to hear from angry ferret owners.
So this is only for cats, though, this is not a community dog program.
No, there is not a community dog program here. There are community dog programs in other places, but we will not.
We don't have.
We don't have.
Okay, any other questions? Awesome.
This is great.
Good, thank you.
Thank you.
And just like that, our last agenda item is the Regional Housing Council's status update. Got there.
Uh good evening, Council of, you know, we're here tonight to have a little bit of a conversation about the. The Regional Housing Council and the conversation, the deliberations they've been having over the last several months regarding um. A new governance structure or transitioning to a new governance structure, uh one being an interim and then ultimately a long-term. Uh the government structure, I before I get into that, I just want to kind of do a quick overview with the current um. Membership of the R H C consists of Regional Housing Council. And currently, according to the I L A, that was adopted at the beginning of twenty twenty one. The Regional Housing Council membership is consists of one voting member. And one alternative member from each of the jurisdictions that represent more than five percent of the county population, so that's Thurston County, City of Lacey. City of Olympia and the City of Tumwater. Uh individual jurisdictions that represent uh. Not quite, uh with yes, but but to represent five percent. Now, individual jurisdictions comprise less than five percent can be a part of the conversation as ex officio, and then there's another provision that. Those jurisdictions that represent less than five percent of the county population can select amongst them a representative that is a voting member. And then the other non-voting members are the chairs of the technical and communication working teams that's established further on in the in our local agreement. And then also the R H C has a provision that they can might invite any subject matter experts such as uh. Representing from the Housing Action Team or uh direct service providers to participate in the conversations to provide input and information. At various work sessions, so that's the current structure of the Regional Housing Council. But as uh time goes on, there've been several factors that have been driving a little bit look at a different structure. Uh one of those is the recent county incorporation of the uh home fund. And the merger of the Olympia Home Fund and the County Home Fund into something, that's in our in our local agreement that Olympia and the county are working on. Uh it hasn't been um finalized yet, but I I believe it's getting close. Other drivers are uh you may recall. Last May, the the Regional Housing Council held a retreat to talk about um. Issues related to housing, the Housing Council and uh vision going forward, and out of that retreat conversation. Um there was some themes that came out, there was a desire, general consensus of all the partners that to create a more independent. Regional Housing Council, independent that they're making final decisions versus making recommendations to the Thurston County. And then also um. Conversations around me having a meaningful engagement uh in not only funding decisions, but also policy decisions from uh members of the community such as. Um Housing Action Team and other subject matter experts. And then uh greater transparency in those funding decisions, and then also reduce some of the current load on all the various jurisdictional staff. And having more of an independent staff supporting directly the Regional Housing Council. So those are the kind of the frameworks to start uh that were that were created to start um. I'm talking about some interim um uh structure for how the R H C may transition going to the future. I will uh go through a quick uh presentation to kind of. To talk about where the deliberations of the Regional Housing Council has landed on, on a a general proposed structure. Uh there hasn't been any decisions at the Regional Housing Council at this point in time, but just a quick walkthrough of what the current. Organization chart that they are currently considering. Or a short-term or interim step before a full uh longer-term uh independent body would be created. So currently, if you look at the screen. Um because you, they're incorporating the the home fund, part of that process, you need to have a advisory boards. Under current program, the Regional Housing Council does create uh funding recommendations through subcommittees that are made up of. Staff representation, members of the current R H C. And um and also some subject matter experts, but it's a very more fluid process and not a well-defined process. So the idea is to create these advisory boards that on the left-hand side, the Affordable Housing Advisory Board, and the far right, the Homeless Service Advisory Board. And these boards will be made up of uh. Um members of the Housing Action Team as well as other subject matter experts that could be representing uh. The finance industry, bankers, developers, uh housing providers, citizens at large, various components that can go into. Uh making a a well-diverse advisory board and make recommendations on not only funding decisions, but also uh creating policy as well. And the same thing for the Homeless Service Advisory Board. As an example, uh the City of Olympia currently has a an advisory board for their home fund, it's made up about like ten individuals, Scott. With two, nine individuals with two ex-official members representing law enforcement and and fire response. And um and it's a very diverse board, so it's really modeled quite after that. One of the other things that came out of the conversations at the uh Housing Council Retreat was. One of the other things that came out of the conversations at the uh housing council retreat was also getting some input from the lived experience community. People with lived experience of homelessness, because they're the ones we're trying to reach and provide service to, so who best to give us feedback. So they're also working currently on developing a lived experience steering committee that would also be formed to help inform not only the advisory boards, but also the housing council on policy decisions and funding streams. So in this chart, it's intended that the lived experience, and the reason why it's dashed in the different circles, it's currently being developed. There's a public process to figure out what that structure is, who's gonna be involved, and how that's gonna be created. But that's intended to be, again, lived um in between those advisory boards as well as the RHC. So as those advisory boards end up making it, does you have a question?
I'll wait until you're done.
Okay, as advisory boards end up uh making their recommendations, it will go up through a review by the tech team, which is going to be made up of the uh the staff leads and the jurisdictional staff, and really the purpose of that is not to say yes or no. It's just to make sure that everything's in compliance with any state or federal or local regulations, and that it's uh consistent amongst each other. That we're not, the one advisory board is not recommending something that's counter to the other. And then wrap that up and present it to the regional housing council at the uh upper left. One of the things is trying to identify what the uh support staff would be. So in the advisory boards, you would have a staff lead being the Thurston County Affordable Housing Manager, which would be a position that the county would need to create. And then on the homeless services advisory board, it would be a uh the Thurston County Homeless Response manager, which is a a currently existing position. Uh operate uh RHC operational staff, and that's uh will be staffed by the Thurston County Office of Homeless or Housing and Homeless uh Prevention. Would be the manager, again, of course, the various affordable housing and homeless response managers, a communication specialist, and a homeless program specialist, and then of course, contract specialist, all that will be geared to housing the county and geared towards supporting the RHC work. With the RHC, um you have the uh exec uh committee, which would be the chair and the vice chair of the RHC, and the staff leads, and their purpose is really just to kind of organize and create the agendas for the various upcoming meetings. And then, of course, in the RHC section, as it is today, currently with the uh representation from the various jurisdictions, jurisdictional staff as a ex officio, and then, of course, when highlighted is the conversation about, does the housing action team also be represented on 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 the RHC? But before we get into that, I want to just kind of go through a couple flow charts of kind of the decision processes that uh will occur under the both the policy level as well as the funding level. So one of the things at the RHC, yes, you're gonna love this one. It's not a straight up and down, it's a
Ready for you to explain this chart.
So, so one of the pieces that uh the RHC is ultimately gonna make recommendations to the Board of County Commissioners is on funding decisions. So in order to create funding decisions, you're gonna start at the top left, blue, and work our right to the right and down. So you're gonna have um a, the annual uh funding cycle is gonna start out with the lived experience steering committee and the advisory boards identifying and making priority recommendations and criteria what this particular year's funding that should be informed on current needs as well as past policy and plans, like the five-year homeless response plan and other plans to identify where those parties are. Then you work through that the tech team ensures that whatever that recommendation's in compliance. Top right, then the regional housing council adopts that and formally recommends those set of priorities and and processes. Then the Office of Housing and Homeless Prevention at the Thurston County will develop the RFP. The Board of County Commissioners will drop down to to the natural on the right. The Board of County Commissioners will approve that RFP, then Thurston County issues it. Once those applications start coming in, the advisory board starts reviewing those and scoring those those applications on weighted scores and then makes their recommendation. Again, it stops at the tech team to make sure everything's in compliance with rules and laws and regulations. Drop down, goes up to the RHC, the RHC approves that funding recommendation, and then ultimately, the Board of County Commissioners authorizes the award and the contract to create. So that's the flow cycle of the funding channel. On the other side, this is gonna be even better. At the policy side.
And the the asterisk there is is important on the on the past one, where if the Board of County Commissioners disagrees with a recommendation, they can't just change it, they have to send it back. And there's historic context there, yeah, there's a, there's historic context.
And so one of the ways I look at this too, in 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 my brain, is I compare it a lot to our land use processes. You have the planning commission making policy recommendations, there's a lot of back and forth between planning, commission, and council. And on the other side, you have the land use permitting, and that's the more technical review. Once the policy are there, now you do the technical review, and it's more of a linear path, which is the funding cycle. But then on the policy side, the same group of bodies wanna start creating like the five-year homeless response plan updates. They're going to create the the six-year strategies for providing uh bringing more housing online, all those various and what's best practices. What's uh how to do coordination, all those pieces. And so in the policy process, it's gonna be more of a back and forth process, but you know, policy initiation on the far left in that that rectangular box, you're gonna have anybody that can propose some policy, to propose initiation, the policy discussion. So they have the regional housing council, the housing action team, advisory boards, tech team, people with lived experience, the jurisdictions or any other can propose that. Then once that policy process starts, you have your advisory boards working from left to right, your tech team with experience starting to deliberate on that, eventually develop recommendations, those recommendations go up to the technical team, and then ultimately up to the regional housing council for adoption.
Can you explain who the housing action team is and how they came about?
Well, the housing action team
Twenty-five words or less.
I'll I'll give a quick shot, and I'm sure uh Councilman Cox can also help supplement that. Uh the housing action team was born out of a a book called Thurston Thrives, and is really a a subgroup of Thurston Thrives that focuses on, or they're made up of memberships of uh service provider, housing providers, uh you have people representing senior housing, senior issues. It's, and it's really, there's not a specific criteria to join, basically show up to meetings and
And and and that is ultimately one of the issues there, is uh the people who is comprised of the housing action team, hasn't been necessarily a regular set of people. It's basically who shows up to the meetings, and they're the housing action team, and I think that's one of the reasons why there's been a little bit of hesitancy, because so far, we haven't been able necessarily identify like this is the housing action team, it's basically whoever shows up, and
Inserting them as a stakeholder with a very defined role in this process, but who's a part of that group?
Is correct, varies, and that's sort of a
You know, a structured element, they have four or five action teams within that, they have the uh housing hub, and they are a group that wants to put together the five homeless plan.
Their own governance.
Yeah, so it's not just once a month meeting where whoever shows up, shows up, then everybody, you know, does everything and goes home, and that's the end of it. There's, you know, these teams are meeting, these like, they're like committees of Thurston Thrives, and they're they're meeting throughout the month and coordinating.
Yeah, and they're and they're groups that are representing family uh support services, Safe Place, Community Services, Hype, uh Growl, all the various uh organization service providers. Uh Councilman Cox attends quite regularly those meetings, I do when I can.
But participation on a regular basis from month from, hasn't been a little sporadic. From who's showing up on a regular basis within the housing action.
And I'd have to look at
For the last almost five years now, I've been going to, I'd say, nine of the twelve monthly meetings each year. And it's a fairly consistent group that comes.
So getting back to the discussions at the regional housing council is, again, going back on the retreat, how do you incorporate a model that has transparency, meaningful engagement, and representation throughout the process? So again, uh this model, the key point of debate that we wanna, you know, make sure council's aware of and have some uh, you know, feedback on, is really at the RHC membership level. Cause everybody pretty much agrees that at the advisory board level and the and the lived experience, you have a lot of stakeholders. You have representation, not only by subject matter experts, but housing action team member members. And then, um as you move up to the RHC at the elected uh, you know, membership, is the proposal to have uh two spots there created for members of HAT to participate. And again, when I, when I say that, the the structure is meant to be that you wouldn't have the same representation at the advisory board level and up there, it'd be different represent- representation members from the HAT, not, so you wouldn't have the same person at an advisory board level, but and at the RHC level. So that's the proposal that came before the regional housing council. Two meetings ago, the housing council said, yes, so bring back this proposal, and we'll maybe take action on our the the last meeting, the next meeting, which was last week. A decision was not made at the regional housing council last week, there's more conversation, and there was a strong push on that membership of the RHC and including the housing action team members, whether they're non-voting or voting membership there. And uh, and so that's the kind of key question I think is going forward, is if the RHC is expanded to include those two seats for housing action team representation, what does that look like? Should they be non-voting, should there be certain criteria about how they're chosen, or should be there be voting membership? The um, there's one other point I forgot, but I'll probably remember it a little bit later. Now, stop right there, and let either Scott or Councilman Cox uh weigh in on.
So I just wanna add some, the reason this is an important conversation, cause at some point, this has to be memorialized in a new analog
That's the point.
And so we wanna make sure that council So I wanna make sure council provides input for Councilman Cox and also the alternative mayor. As we go through this, we can actually inform that regional discussion, so that that is why that is important. I do wanna point out, just in sort of my um terms to simplify this, think of more of a pyramid. The reason you have an affordable housing advisory board and a homeless service advisory board, they are looking at two sets of different funds. So um on your left, the affordable housing is gonna be looking at the home fund dollars, it's very um specific to obviously um perma-sport housing and those type of construction projects. Your homeless services advisory board are in our traditional sources of funds, like twenty sixty dollars or twenty-one sixty-three dollars, which are recording fees that are providing broader-based homeless-related services. So you have those two different advisor boards providing input and rating those. And then at some point, that's gonna be a pyramid effect that goes all the way up to the regional housing council to affirm those recommendations. So maybe an easy way, now we, in defense of Rick, those graphs were made by regional partners, that was not Rick doing that. So I just wanna make, I wanna defend his honor for the different colors and the arrows, so.
Just to reinforce uh the uh your local agreement, if the regional council decides to keep the status quo, there wouldn't have to be a anything that would create the need for a meeting. However, if the regional housing council decides, hey, we really wanna have the housing action team here as either a non-voting or a voting member, then that would have to come back to all the individual home jurisdiction electing bodies for a limit of the interlocal agreement. So we really wanna make sure that the council's aware of that, starting, you know, we can start responding to questions and also get some feedback.
So, and I I think that's where the, sort of the rubber meets, we're like, we sort of agree on everything down below. I think the housing action team being a a non-voting member is something, as as uh Carolyn can talk about, is something that's been sort of talked about all along. Now, well, so normally, you're you're, it's sort of strange having a the hat be art at the RHC level. But there's sort of this been this mistrust between the hats and the funding such partners. And so I could see why they want to sort of be at the table more. But what it really is kind of like is having a planning commission member sit at our council and a non-voting member, right? It's we, it's not normal. And so I'm I'm tending at this point to, since they've been a part of discussion all along as a non-voting member, um I'm tending to sort of, in the interim, sort of a a sort of throw them a bone in this case, to make them feel a part of the process. Now, I really think we need to put some parameters on that, on who that person is, as as long as it's not a a nonprofit that will eventually receive funds, then, oh, you know, okay. There's no real conflict of interest. I do think there's a conflict of interest to say if that housing action team member is homes first or something like that, where they could get funding in the end, I think that is a clear conflict. And sometimes that's been dismissed, oh, well, they just recuse themselves. Well, if they're been a part of discussion all along, and and then at the end, it's like, okay, I'm gonna recuse myself from the vote, but they've been talking to me, that that seems like unfair, um and so I think we need to be conscious about that. I'm also worried about long-term, I don't think this is a great long-term, once there's up and running staff, and this is, it's become its own standalone entity that we, at that point, that there should be trust enough that the system is operating well, that you don't need that extra person along the way, but I guess it's sort of, we're gonna have to see how this kind of goes. I just wanna make sure that there's really no conflict. But what happened is, it it was um at last meeting, there was this sort of last second saying, well, no, I think that housing action team member should be voting, shouldn't be there, uh non-voting, they should be voting. And I think that um caught the group a little off, and everyone sort of paused a little bit to table it to come back. And that's where we're at, and so I think that's the real discussion uh right now.
He will, I invite him to look at this as a transitional model. Because we we do intend to transition this into an independent agency, something like just um that has, you know, it's has its own staff kind of thing, and it, you know, there is a long, long history between what's now the housing action team, but the service providers and the funders and the relationships and having them provide expertise, but then needing to have bright line that avoids conflict of interest. So service agencies aren't the ones deciding, you know, who gets the money to provide the services. And so I think, you know, we're, I've been trying to make that very clear as as chair of the housing council as we as we go along. It that was rather surprising at last week's meeting, because at previous meeting, we had consensus that they would be, they would add the two housing action team members, but they would have a non-voting role. And then Olympia, who did not comment on it for several meetings, suddenly wanted them to have a vote. It just got a little confusing there, but.
But I I do think we should sort of, our preference is that it's a non-voting member, and I think we all, we both agree with that, and I, you know.
Is it because there's only, is because there's four members, is that, is that would make it a fifth member?
There's four, or there's five voting members currently with, between the four jurisdictions and the South County representation.
Because they, okay.
And then it's to add two seats that would be represented by the housing action team.
Ex officio or not.
Ex officio or not, and part of it is they wanna have, they'll be able to have input at that level to inform, because they're the subject matter experts. So there's some debate too, is whether is it hat or is it a subject matter expert? Cause that could be also a banker, developer, housing, you know, other aspects of it. It's always been focused on the hat, and again, it comes from this conversation that why are these funding decisions made without the input of the people that are on the ground, understanding the issues and doing the work? That that's the basics, debate back and forth, the public accountability, and then informed decisions based on expertise.
And so, who that person, yeah, who that person is makes all the difference in the world, I I think who that hat member is.
Well, but in this model, we wouldn't choose, sorry, it wouldn't have self-identify who their representation.
That's the problem, I think it matters who they identify, if we can sort of go along with it or not.
I think what we're doing is saying who who that person isn't.
Yeah.
By creating criteria, saying if you are
Not a representative of an agency that would receive funding.
Exactly, and, yeah, so that Exactly. And, yeah, so that. We try to keep that line very strict.
Um, yeah. So what's the timeline now?
So, in the terms of timeline, we're, there's, there's, there's just a lot coming on a merge at the same time. So you have. The, the county established the home fund. So now there's going to, you're already collecting and now it's ready to be uh, uh, put out in the funding cycle. You have the conversations between the city of Olympia and the county to merge home funds and that I L A, which we haven't seen yet, but it sounds like it's getting close to be adopted by each jurisdiction. And we want to get the, a structure in place going into this fall. Because we're going to start next year's funding cycle, which really starts uh, for twenty twenty-three, starts in November, December, start framing the conversations. Forming the committees, advisory boards, setting it in place to start the uh, deliberation for RFPs that generally go out, I think in February, if I remember correctly, in the cycle. So that's one of the challenges is, is if we don't, we go back to our current model, which is. Members of the, the RHC, members of staff, being subcommittees and working through that with all, everything else that's going on too. So timeline is we're looking to try to do something like this established so they can start forming basically the advisory board level.
And, and, and the new I L A that's going to come back before the councils, are, are you going to be excluding Tenino and that since they opted out?
That, that is a, a, a good question that hasn't really been talked about, because we've been focusing on this in terms of a missed I L A. But that's something that could be considered.
I mean.
But, but generally in the, in the fight, the communities represented, they have one representation and only one has been active, but that has been the city of Yon.
Sure.
And even when they try to get consensus from the other cities about them being that, they haven't heard anything from the other state. So it's really Yon's the only one that's active.
Well, I, I understand that, but I mean, I think that needs to be addressed. I mean, if, if Tenino is not contributing to the bigger pot, they shouldn't be a part of the decision. Yeah, they did their own way. Yeah. So um, that, that, and I'll just make my other comment, I haven't made this before about the, the lived experience steering committee. I've uh, I did, I've been a part of quite a few conversations when it comes to veteran homelessness at the National League of Cities level. And um, you know, several years ago, we went around and heard from a bunch of different military communities. Um, working on this issue who also wanted to have a lived experience. And what they found out that is if they. Were not um, paying for people to go to those meetings, they had, had no participation whatsoever. Right? Cause could you imagine if you're homeless or just recently homeless, you're struggling? The ability for to give you, you know, two, three hours to participate. And unless you're sort of, there's some compensation there. Um, the communities that tried to do that without compensation had no participation. So I just, I just want to.
There's something that's come up to is compensation for the advisory, especially for the lived experience and then figuring out what are the. Policies around it and various jurisdictions, you know, are inconsistent at this point.
Well, I can tell you from examples across the country. I haven't heard from one where they tried to do it and they all had to come back in the day.
When the state of Washington and the city of Lacey are either developing or have policies to pay people who participate on committees. Because of lived experience or if they have low income. So we have templates that RHC could draw from to support people on that committee.
And, and that lived experience steering committee being formed, being formed to uh, develop with a facilitator. And that's part of what they're talking about, whether it needs to help support it. They'll come out of that.
Well, so are, are we on the, sort of on the same page where the, the non-voting member, we're okay as long as it's. They're not a funder, someone who's receiving funding.
Yeah, it makes sense to have them in the room, but it also makes sense to have them be ex officio, just to keep the lines clear.
Yeah, I was wondering if, if um, if they did want, if, if they became somehow a funder. You know, where they get the resources, do such things, but um, would that qualify them?
Well, I think, I think we, the language can be pretty clear, because there, there are um, subject matter, matter experts. That never receive funding, right? Uh, with, you know, and so um, I think it's as long as you make a condition that they, their organization. Will not apply or receive funding. If they do, I guess they'd have to step down and someone else step to take their place on, on the regional housing council, but. You know, I think long-term, it doesn't make a lot of sense, but what I think is they, there's a plenty of opportunity for them to. Um, have inputs at the advisory level. So it's kind of weird that they're advising at the advisory level and then they're also. Talking about and they're at the. It, never seen that before, but I mean, in the meantime, if that's where they feel, we need to get off the ground, feel comfortable, then so, so be it.
I think it's useful to think about it as a transition model, like Carolyn said, and that this can be revisited. But this is a moment where we're trying to build trust between all these partners, because we haven't had this structure before.
And the other thing too, just, you know, because you have this structure, doesn't mean you still, the RHC cannot still have round tables or conversations with how or other session. As a work session type piece where they are engaged on a topic, give more for.
And I hope that does happen, right? Especially when you're, you know, trying to develop policies and everything, you, you have that conversation back and forth.
Well, you, you probably know better than anybody. Hopefully you spent more time with it.
This is what we were trying to do at the retreat and we just got the bare minimum of the conversation started. So I'm pleased to see this finally coming together.
I mean, it was just all the things about.
What the role. How do we balance the powers and yeah, make these decisions and allocate funds. And this seems like a functional model. I always, I'm thinking ahead already, like, let's assume that that happens. You get that done, it comes together. Perfect. Is the RHC, have there been discussions about the RHC advocating at the state level for funding? Or is that still going to be left to advocacy groups and independent jurisdictions?
At this point, there hasn't been any formal discussions on that because really the RHC is just focused on this and other brush buyers of the day. With the right away initiatives and other issues that are currently pressing, that need action on. We've been dominating with, you know, with that. That annual funding cycles, we just finished up making those recommendations. We just had another round of additional dollars come out on, uh, there was a. Uh, and also, you know, ten dollars, you know, awards as well. So it's been, the regional house council's been busy on that.
But you know, eventually I hope we get there, right? Hopefully we, we get to the executive director level position where. They're doing this and then also advocating for ongoing funding and more streamlined funding and so on, so forth. But I imagine, I mean, we have so much we have to do between now and that point.
Next year.
Yeah. Get right, all those things, yeah.
Yeah, we look at a two-year plan of roughly to, to change, at the earliest a transition to an independent body. But there's also going to be a lot of heavy conversations, because right now, all, all the funds come down through the county, they're the fiduciary and ultimate authority. And with those are admin dollars, you got to figure out how you transition staff and create that. You know, seamless, so no jurisdictions impacted, but also we create it up on the right foot.
Well, I think one other important point that we um, have discussed too is how to take the poli- jurisdictional politics out of this. Because, you know, we, we have to build trust. I mean, if we're going to really have regional solutions, we have to work together as a team. And not worry about, you know, is Tumwater getting a little more than Lacey or.
Well, and especially when it comes right down to the policy side, you know, how, how Lacey looks at this issue is different than how Olympia looks at this issue. So how do you reconcile those two policies, right? Hopefully the regional housing council will, will do that. And, you know, that's a lot of pressure for them to do that.
It is.
But also it'd be easier for them. If, if we don't have that jurisdiction, we're always trying to figure out how do we balance and.
Oh, absolutely.
So that's, that's the biggest challenge right now.
Okay, well. Okay, well with that, we have uh, reached the end of our agenda. So the objection, I'll, I'll call this meeting adjourned.